Good evening and welcome to a special meeting on what is the date today, February 4th, to look into new business, presentation of potential Maine and U.S. Military Innovative Readiness Training projects by project engineer Owens McCullough from Sabegow Technics and Danielle Loring, Executive Assistant.
Danielle advised me I should give just a little background but not too much.
Please do.
So here's the little background, little background, as we're here to talk about a, I think, a very significant opportunity for the town to partner with the State of Maine National Guard and the U.S. Military National Guard on projects that could benefit the community at a significantly reduced cost because of the training value that the Guard would find in such projects and their willingness to provide the labor and some of the expendables, the fuel and so forth. And so anyhow, we're going to talk about a number of projects that we identified very quickly. This came about sort of through happenstance. I was on a, actually a complaint investigation. Some citizens complained about the noise at the shooting range at the Boy Scout facility. And so we went down and we met the very pleasant new camp manager, Scott Martin, and Scott told us that they were aware of the issue and they had a plan to mitigate the noise and it included working with the military. So that piqued my interest because a number of years ago, we actually had a plan going where we were going to work with the main guard and then partner with Camp Hines as the, as the second applicant. So I asked him more about it. He suggested I call Eric Tarbox, the new overarching scout executive for the State of Maine, Maine. So I did that, called Eric, found out that they were well along in their application process. Eric described what was going on. It was significantly larger and much more complicated and a much more difficult application process than what we had been through maybe 10 years ago, which by the way was approved, but then the guard was deployed overseas and so that just evaporated. So we do have some history and some, you know, contact with our main national guard on projects of, you know, recreation projects, public works projects. So anyhow, I got in touch with Eric, he was very helpful. He said he was happy for us to partner, but the time window was very short. So we got together, staff did, put together a very quick, but I, but I hope a comprehensive outline of some projects that were able to be, and I hate to use this term, but shovel-ready very quickly in the near term and then, and then some in a little more distant future. So Danielle worked diligently over the weekend. Our town engineer, it says town planer on his plaque, but I think it was our town engineer, Owens McCullough, went into overdrive and for no pay, I should add, which he's doing this on a contingent basis, i.e. if we were to approve some of these projects and go to design and then get final approval from town meeting, then perhaps we pay him. But anyway, so we're here tonight to, to talk about these opportunities. We went down with very short notice, made our presentation, big table, all around the table, all these military folks from all over the country, folks from the Pentagon. A little bit daunting, I would say, but it went well and they liked our projects and we made it to the next step. Danielle has followed the thing through and so I, I think we're pretty much assured of the main guard and more than likely going to see some activity from the national guard on this project. Was that about right?
Yeah.
Is there anything left for you guys to say?
Not really.
No, 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 they got lost to say. That's just the, that's just the very, very, very brief intro. You're going to get a little detail.
Sam?
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
You say very short, quick time and I know what that means, but can you give us some dates?
Oh.
Are you talking last summer till this fall?
We're talking, go ahead, you can do that.
You're going to overview the dates?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, so as Don described, we, we learned about these IRT projects because of the Boy Scouts of America and they said, "Look, our projects are potentially vertical, which means they have to do with buildings, but we're looking for some horizontal work. Do you have anything?" So we went in October of this last year to a roundtable discussion to talk with them and see what it was that these were all about and through that we met Captain True Blood and she said, "Look, I'm the director of the IRT program. If you can get me an application in like a week, like I will consider these." Well, the application is actually not doable in a week, so it took us actually about a month and a half to go through everything Owens denies. Because what it was is first we went to department heads and we said, "What it is, what is it that you guys have for projects? What are things that are overarching that the whole town needs and we'll throw them all in the pot and then kind of sift through them and phase them out as low hanging fruit the next level." Like phase two would be like what needs some permitting and phase three is like dreamland, like what, what is it that needs significant amount of permitting and financing to get through? We kind of took phase through and completely threw them out for the time being and we're left with what we call phase one, which is like the low hanging fruit that has to do with some projects that need to help our departments really function and maintenance, maintenance sort of level things. The next ones are kind of more intricate projects that would really help to solve some much larger scope issues that we have. So we got that in and immediately I heard back from Captain True Blood from the U.S. National Guard and then back from Sergeant Romano from the main national guard and they, both of them said that the application had been accepted, everything was going through and they were putting them out through a bidding process with all of their different levels and tiers to see who it was who was interested to come out. And surprisingly enough, that instead of coming out towards the end of 2014 into 15, they're so excited about our projects that they want to come out as of like between March and May of this year to start coming out and deploying things. So we'll get into that a little bit later and really first Owens is going to talk about what it is that Innovative Readiness Training Program really means and what the relationship is and what we can expect in terms of work from them and the level of preparedness that we have to have on our end between engineering and stuff like that, so.
I could almost jump to my last slide.
Oh, God.
Is it true, I've heard that the Boy Scouts have offered to bill the military over there at Camp Hines during this process?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the Boy Scouts of America are going to house and feed the, the military while they're in and then all we'll have to really do is just pay for the cost of the engineering and permitting and any of the materials for the work that they have to do. So really, this really does rely along, I mean, rely upon us doing our projects in tandem with them because it said they have the vertical work, which is the building, and we have the horizontal work they have, but the Boy Scouts are also taking on a huge expenditure by housing them and keeping them on grounds. And we've, we've offered to help do things like store their vehicles and stuff, but really it's the, the Boy Scouts who are.
Yeah, that's great.
Taking a huge part of that.
Just one more, just very brief thing. There already onsite are significant amounts of tools and equipment in what look like container cars that would drop ship by the military. And when they come in, the guard units will come in from all over the United States, as will the equipment. You're looking at, you know, probably a convoy of heavy equipment and trucks in here and then they'll probably, according to Colonel Nichelle from Colorado, they'll probably rent every available piece of heavy equipment, you know, within a 60 mile radius. So they're going to be a significant number of guardsmen from all over the country with various specialties and there'll be a lot of equipment. The idea for them is that they learn how to work cooperatively together and interdisciplinary wise, you know, different branches of the military, because if they get shipped and they do get thrown into, you know, a situation overseas where they have to do that, so this gives them the practice to do that.
Thank you. All of it.
Okay, I won't, I won't talk about, Don and Danielle did a nice job covering all of that, so I'll just talk briefly about how this relates to the town of Raymond. I've actually been through this process with the scouts before up at Camp Bomazin, working with the scouts where we use the main national guard to build a roadway up there and it worked out very well and I'll talk a little bit more about sort of the ins and outs of how this works. But basically this Innovative Readiness Training is, as Don and Danielle described it, the military brings in their assets, they work cooperatively to complete projects, the town or the entity receiving those provides the projects. They got to, they have to complete all the engineering, design, get all the environmentals, complete all the permits and provide materials for the construction. The guard comes in and provides all the equipment, the manpower to erect vertical projects, to run wiring if they need to, to do the earth moving, all of those sort of operations. So the, the slide on the bottom just shows you the steps. We've identified the projects, the town has submitted the application, we've received positive feedback that's gone out to the guard units to look at basically bidding on the projects that come to Maine. It could even be a local guard unit that does some of the projects. And then we've got to implement this. So kind of where we're at right now, or where the town is at, is what would have to happen next is there's, and I'll go through the projects and each of the projects have varying degrees of engineering and planning work that needs to be done. If the guard is coming in this year to do some of the projects, what will happen is, is we'll, that means we've kind of, kind of jump on the engineering and to get it all ready for them to come in. And what we've tried to do is identify projects, kind of a diversity of projects, as Danielle said, kind of the low hanging fruit ones that we can get ready very quickly, other ones that are more of a longer term project. The other advantage to doing that is, is my experience with the guard, especially if it's main guard units that come in, they tend to come in and use these projects as potentially weekend work, they're once a, once a month weekend work, or they're two weeks of training a year, which is what happened up at Camp Bomazin. And while that worked well, it took a couple of years to really complete the project because they, they basically mobilize on a Friday afternoon, they work all day Saturday, they work half a day Sunday and then they demobilize, they go home and the next month they come back and they do more work. And that's the local guard units. And then we were fortunate enough to get them for their two week deployment and up at Camp Bomazin, they stayed right there, just like they would be doing down here at the Boy Scouts. And it was great, they provided all the, we had a, we had a road to build and they provided all of the equipment, all of the excavation, the compaction. We even had a gravel source on the site we were working on, they screened it, they reused it, made their own riprap there, so. But the scouts had to provide loam, seed, silt fencing, erosion control things, and we had to do all the permitting and engineering design through the DEP and have all the environmentals in place, because the guard has a very specific environmental review, I have to provide them with all of the permits, write up on all of the environmental requirements and they won't mobilize until all of those permits are in, are in place. So that, that was kind of the process. So again, we've already talked about this, you're leveraging military assets for training purposes plus some town contribution and hopefully coming away with reduced project costs and some improved facilities that benefit the town. The projects we've identified are the Valley, and I have, as we go on down, I've got slides that talk more in detail about each one, but real quick, Valley Road Public Safety Communications Tower, Restoration of a Town Fire Pond that needs to be serviced and rebuilt, Fire Station Site Safety and Visibility Improvements, the Mill Street Recreational Fields have been identified as a project. And then what we call the Egypt Road Farewell Road or Patricia Avenue Recreational Master Plan and Field Construction. That's a much larger project that would probably take guard units from away and may take, may have to be built in phases over time. And then a Public Works Pole Barn that would have some vertical component to it, town would have to provide wood materials, things like that, but the guard would do all the erection to put, store some materials and equipment undercover. So let's dive into the first project, which is the Valley Road Public Safety Communications Tower. So that, we've already completed the survey that was done as part of the purchase and sale process, so the land survey has all been done. The town is actually, the fire department actually acquired the tower and owns the tower and owns the land, so we've got a good start on that one. The guard would come in and provide the manpower, the equipment to build the access road, there's land clearing, land grading, some related earth work to erect the tower, there's some utility lines that would have to come in, a base pad that would have to be built. And then what the town would need to provide is again permitting and engineered plans. The permitting's straightforward because there really is no permitting other than going through the code enforcement officer. It's a small enough project that doesn't require any DEP state or federal permitting, so that's good. We may have to file a 74-6 form, what they call 74-60 with the FAA. It's generally for anything 200 feet above ground level. We're not that tall, but many times I go on, it's online, I do it anyway because of the height of, of, of ground in this location, it's a simple thing to do. Then the, the town would, you know, there'll be a concrete foundation for the project, would have to do some geotechnical engineering to support the tower. There would be a small control building, a precast building that would have to set on site, there'd be gravel to build the access road, a pad around the building, some crushed stone fencing, probably a generator, we budgeted it in there for a generator, emergency generator for it. There's electrical and of course communications equipment that would come in, so the town would purchase all those equipments. The guard would send in electricians, folks that would build towers and do earthwork. We think this would have some interest to the guard because it's not a huge project, but it brings a number of assets together, you know, different skills and trades and it's around communication and of course military activities are around communication. So we think that this will certainly draw some, some attention, probably outside of Maine too. The next project is the Oakledge Hill Fire Pond Rehabilitation. Now this is one that I call the very low hanging fruit, a pretty simple project to do. There's a very limited amount of surveying and engineering, basically just to give plans, probably permit by rule with DEP to restore the fire pond. And then the guard would come in with equipment to dredge, dredge the pond out and then rebuild the fire hydrant and of course the town has to provide piping and materials. It's a very easy one, I'd almost envisioned probably like a local guard coming in and doing it over a weekend or two training periods, but town comes away with a restored fire The next project is the Public Safety Building, some intersection clearing and visibility improvements. This photo is not real good, but there's the Public Safety Building, there's a vegetated area here and what's kind of interesting, we've talked about this one, is at the intersection there's a little bit of difficulty seen in both directions. The other piece is, is that with a public safety building, you do like to have some visibility so that people know where it's at and ironically this is pretty well hidden back up there. So this is another kind of a, from a construction standpoint, a fairly straightforward one to do. The permitting's a little more challenging because this already has a DEP permit and so we'd have to amend that DEP permit and that area down there had some buffering associated with stormwater, so we would have to go through the calculations, analysis, file amendment to the DEP and get that approved. But the guard would come in, there would be most likely some selective clearing through the site, some regrading and contouring loam and seed to improve that area and provide a little more visibility. Again, this one is one that we think might draw attention even from some of the local guard units because it's, it's a fairly short duration project. The next one's a little bit bigger of a project, it's the Mill Street Ball Field Improvement Project. I actually looked at this one with the town. How long ago was that Nathan? Six, seven, eight years ago?
Yeah, seven or eight anyway.
This, this field is, obviously everybody knows, has some drainage issues down there. It's a very flat location. Nathan and I looked at it years ago to try to figure out what we might do. The problem is, is there's almost no topographical relief. We'd have to run a pipe 800 feet through the woods off the property to get an outlet if we wanted to. So what we were looking at, ultimately what we thought was to actually raise the fields up more, a couple of feet to artificially, almost make like an island to improve that sub base drainage. The rec, the folks at the rec department, we met with them, were interested in three, turning this into three ball fields, I believe, three, three smaller 60 foot diamonds, I think is what they did, to maybe improve the parking area. And of course that means that you take down the existing fencing, backstops, everything, you bring in important fill material, drainage layer, rebuild it, put loam and seed and all of that down. So this project has a little more construction involvement. The permitting side of it's pretty straightforward because it's already developed, so that's a good thing. But on the construction side, it would take the fields out of service for a while, depending on the guard units that come in. It could be a project that takes several months to get done or shorter duration, it all depends on who, which guard units put in a bid for this thing, call it a bid, but an interest in this project.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
So you're looking at that to do three baseball fields? Are you looking to expand that whole area or?
No.
I can't see three baseball fields.
Well, I, when I met with them, I think they're looking to either, these would be smaller fields for the young, the youth. And actually I asked them if, because usually 60 foot diamonds you want, what is it, 100, 200, 180 or 200 feet to the outfield and he doesn't even need that. He's talking about making this for the very young and, you know, we'd have to plan out. It, it could be, you know, we, we didn't really go through a planning exercise yet to see whether, I call it a, a pinwheel type design would work or whether it would be diamonds at alternate locations. We would need to go through that exercise with the rec department to see if that works or what works best for them.
The other thing that Kevin McDonald, who is at our Friday planning meeting, Kevin McDonald has been, I think, the president of Raymond Baseball Softball for a number of years. He mentioned that we might want to, you know, look at the entire design and perhaps put a community walking path, kind of track around the perimeter for people who don't, you know, have little kids who play baseball, you know, it might be a place where people could walk. There are a number of things you could do, other improvements on that, on that spot and still accomplish the baseball mission and the playground mission.
So you wouldn't actually put drainage in that field, you'd just kind of build it up and pitch it?
Well, I'd love to put, if, if, if I could get the elevation, I'd love to put underdrainage to the field and put, you know, the interesting thing about building the field, the ultimate best way to build a field is, is to have a drainage layer so that the water gets through the field, but then you have to also irrigate the field, or you should, to get the grass to grow properly, but, oh, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
So that would be, in an ideal world, what we would like to do. The challenge we have on this site is, is it is so flat that I'd have to build it up so much, I'm not sure I could ever really achieve what I'd like to do from an underdrain unless I got an outlet someplace. But we would, we would revisit all that as part of a, a planning phase.
Yeah, I'm not too excited about just adding more loam on there and pitching it and saying.
No, there's more to it than that. I'm going to ask him a question now, we didn't, this didn't come up in the meeting, but you know, 35 years ago, whatever it was, when I was an intern in Cape Elizabeth, Family Field, I don't know if you're familiar with that, in Cape Elizabeth across from Fort Williams, is built in a swamp. One of my first jobs as an intern was to meet with the 83-year-old engineer who designed and put that thing in 30 or so years prior to that date. And it has a very complex, I believe tile in that case, but underdrain, underlayment system. So they built it in the swamp, raised it up, put the drainage system under it. I guess it, it works reasonably well, but, so are we looking at something like that?
Well, the way I, and we get to the end of this slide, the way I sort of budgeted out some construction costs for the field was to raise the field to two and a half feet in elevation, actually bring it up, not just adding loam to it, but bringing it up to two and a half feet in elevation. And then trying to put some underdrainage in it and if, if there is any topographical relief, Nathan, help me out, I think it kind of, I think it wants to try to go this way if there is any.
We put a, probably a 10 or 15 foot deep pond right in that little corner where your light was.
Yep.
From the road to that pond, we had a quarter of an inch pitch is all we could get out of that.
Quarter of an inch. At this point, I don't honestly, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have any topography to really answer your question.
But it will be an engineered solution.
Yes.
It won't be just adding fill, it'll be engineering and drainage and lots of complexity to make this happen.
The problem is that's sitting all on clay.
Right.
Where is it relative to the creek there? You're probably, and it drains away from the creek, doesn't it?
No, it drains towards the river out back there. That's going to be probably 2,500 feet, 3,000 feet to the, to the, and we don't own that property out back. I think Shiretts, I believe owns, owns that piece out back.
But the, the short answer is yes, we're going to look at an engineered field with drainage to improve the play surface. I just don't have, no, until we do the field surveys and the studies, I, I can't tell you how I'll accomplish that yet.
And you're absolutely correct. In another instance, you can have a field that drains too well.
Yes.
You know, we built one one time that drained it too well and then it was a soil scientist coming in and deciding what kind of amendments had to be put in so it didn't drain as well. So it's a, it's a very delicate balance.
And there'll always be somebody who will, it's always an interesting adventure. So this one, the next two slides I have, all, these are longer term, larger projects and I apologize, it's going to take me a couple of minutes to walk you through all of these. So this is up at the Egypt Road where the Farwell Road, the closed landfill down and through here. This parcel is. How many acres in total size?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six acres in size. And the guard, one, what really dragged, drew our attention to this site was an recreational opportunity to build a multi-field complex of maybe 19 acres or so in size. I, the reason I chose 19 acres is if I go over 20 acres, I have to go to the main department of environmental protection for a site location of Development Act permit. So I started with a 19 acre parcel, which a ball field, a soccer field's what, two, two and a half acres in size, so depending on how you lay it out, you could, you could achieve quite a bit of, of a play surface. The, what attracted us to this was that the guard, it's a very large earth moving project that the guard would, my experience with them is they love to come in with the big equipment and move dirt around. And, you know, I, I can't tell you exactly where the fields would go, we've drawn some areas that we have some interest in. We need to do the environmentals on it first. I'll call it master planning for the project, which would be a boundary survey, topo, look at the site for wetlands, vernal pools, all of those things that come into play when we design a field. And my thought was, instead of designing one big massive field, which, and maybe that's how it works best, but to also try to break it up into incremental steps so that guard units could come in and spend a month or so building a piece of it and then another guard unit could come in and do another piece of it. Instead of tearing, my concern is, is having some experience with this, is if I open up 19 acres and do it all at one time, I still have to get a stormwater permit from the DEP and they will inspect the site and I really don't want to have nobody around in a big site opened up. So we need to manage it carefully depending on what guard unit would respond to it. This one would be a project that I don't see could, I wouldn't see happening this coming year, with the exception of maybe a small piece of, of it, because we need to do a fair amount of permitting and master planning and it's probably on the, it's not probably from the engineering and the planning side, the most expensive of all the projects, just because it's so large. As a, as a ball field, another interesting thing is depending on what we ultimately end up with, I could end up needing a traffic movement permit through the main department of transportation.
Really?
Yeah, over a hu, they call it over 100 trip-ins in the peak hours, so it's 50, and what's entering 100 trip-ins is a trip in is one trip, a trip out is another, so it's basically 50 cars coming in and going, which we could easily do, you know, with a, with a large field. So this one would be a longer term project, but you know, from a cost, I'll show you in a few moments, from a cost standpoint, you know, some of the biggest costs for a project like this is moving earth. And there's a huge benefit, you know, for the town to end up with a very large recreational facility.
Is that Farwell Road private?
It is, well. Nathan, I need your help.
No, it's town land.
It's town land, and they have a right of way across it, an easement across it. There's one house right on the first part, and you have the log cabin up in there.
Right. It might be that you relocate the road, that you change the road. There, there could be any number of things that could happen there, but it's across our property.
Okay, so the town owns the road.
Correct.
Right.
And they have easements off the road.
One of the first things we, and the reason I brought up master planning, one of the first things we would need to do, and the guard wouldn't even come out here until all this is done anyway. We would need to do topography, boundary survey, which would identify any restrictions, rights. I have to talk to the DEP about the landfill. You know, I, I don't think we're gonna be able to put any wells, drilled wells out there or anything like that. It'd have to be potable water. So, you know, there are some, there's some upfront due diligence that has to happen. In that process, having worked on some large field projects before, that will take several months because there's gonna be a lot of interest from the town, you know, folks who would, the recreational, what the needs are. So that's a little more of a longer-term project. The other site, yes, I'm sorry.
As far as a well goes, can you go back? The, where the number two is?
Yes.
That goes uphill fairly significantly towards the left side of your yellow circle. And it looks like our land goes fairly high. Could you put a well? I mean, if you get, yeah, the land goes way up there, right?
Yes.
You put a well in uphill?
Well, that's it.
And, and would bring the water down? I mean, you, you would get, I know there's a certain amount of space you have to go from the landfill, but with eighty-some-odd acres. Could we find a place possibly?
I mean, do you know if there's an aquifer there?
I, I haven't dug in that much. I did read the, there was a hydro geo report that was done when the Farwell Road subdivision came in. And the water quality was, well, they found that the, that the wells were okay. I think there was high, I don't have it with me, there was.
Yeah, but are, are you talking about for irrigation, for the ball fields?
Right.
Okay, 'cause the deal, the deal on this property, folks, is we bought it to keep it from any kind of development that would include, you know, utilizing the water supply for human consumption.
Right.
Because the idea is, you don't know, you know, it, it's too big a risk to take. But I, but I don't think it's too big a risk to take to water grass.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I was thinking potable waters, but for an irrigation, yeah, I think we could pursue that. We just have to take safeguards that, you know, somebody hasn't.
Right, that it can't be for consumption.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. I, I didn't explain it very well.
The, the, the other site is up off Patricia Lane or Avenue. And this is your old closed landfill, which actually closed, well, that was before you, Don, right? I mean, it was a number of years ago. We closed the construction and demolition debris landfill. This was the.
PD before Don.
PD before Don. And then this is the septic spreading area, which is no longer used. This area, when I looked at it, I don't think we have as much usable area as the other site. This is about a twelve-acre area in through here. The site drops off, as I recall, pretty good, coming down out back. So I, you know, this area in here might be the best option for it. I don't think we would get nineteen acres like the other site, but it is an option. And we, we identified it as a town-owned land. It's a possibility for the site.
This was actually a suggestion from Kevin McDonald, who thought the, you know, the site, having, have some familiarity with the other one, that this site might be more suitable.
Problem is you're driving through that residential area to get there.
Yeah.
And we're, we're coming off Egypt Road. I mean, it's residential, but it's, it's not like driving through a neighborhood.
That, that's true, but at some point in history, and maybe the development wasn't, the air wasn't intensely as developed, but it was the, a destination for folks on Saturdays if it was the dump, right?
You just go watch them just move the earth over the hill.
Well, yeah, that's, that's.
How it used to be done, right?
Yeah, that's right.
When that, just for background, when that dump was closed, it was closed when the DEP was, was reimbursing seventy-five percent of the cost just trying to get things closed out in there and, but.
So that was like nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three?
Yeah, it was, yeah, somewhere up around there, yeah, yeah, a while ago.
That was actually kind of late in the game, too.
Yeah. So the next two projects are, are, well, they're, they're one project, but two locations that we've identified. This was an equipment storage pole barn to put excavator, trucks, materials under this. The, this site over here, this is the town's sand and salt storage shed here in the current Public Works Storage Area. And what Nathan and I were talking about was a pretty simple forty by eighty, I call it a pole barn structure. Maybe it would be on a, on a foundation, but sort of a shed-type roof that would get plow trucks, could be used to store materials. He really has.
Offseason equipment.
Yeah. Very, you know, what's interesting, I'm working with three other communities on public works facilities right now. And public works, it's amazing how much, what the value is of the equipment the public services facilities have. And it's outside, most all of it. And, and, you know, as I've looked at these, working with these different communities, it's just, it's, you have, you have a big investment. And one, one fully outfitted plow truck is.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For the small ones.
So it, you know, we thought that this would be, I'll call it, it's also maybe a low-hanging fruit project in that it's, the location's there from a permitting standpoint, it would be pretty straightforward. There's a little more upfront, there's a little more cost to the town because you'd have to provide any concrete for the foundations. You'd have to provide roofing, wood materials. The guard has a.
Roofing would come in, relatively speaking, inexpensively, rolled metal. They actually provide the machine to corrugate it to make the roof.
So there's.
So they make the panels on site.
The, the other location we looked at is, well, just down the street here. This is the, I'll call it the bus garage, District Two. District Two. And we, one thought was, was to maybe put a pole barn here, potentially out back. Bruce had some interest in that location, too. There might be some shared storage space with some equipment. It was kind of convenient for you folks, so.
Seasonal with boats, basically.
Don't we own like four or five acres back?
Yeah, the site comes like this, kind of jets out, comes back like this. We actually mapped all the wetlands out here. And Nathan, you've used every square inch you can use because this, the heck here is all wetland.
We looked at selling that and it was so wet.
You might get a house lot or two, but.
Right.
My concern about this one, I don't know if this could ever work, and I talked to Mike about this today, is this is a highly visible lot. It's, if that building weren't there, I'm wondering if it would be a lot that, assuming someday in the very, very distant future, not next year, not whenever, but would that be potentially a good site for a, if we were not to get any other site or building for a town office, community center, library building? I mean, that's a pretty nice site, absent the wetlands in the back, you know. But there's, if, if that concrete block building was somehow gone, let's assume someday Nathan's operations were centralized at Plains Road. That's my only worry there, and I, I think to put a pole barn out by the road, I remember, there was criticism about the Cardwood Depot years ago. I think a pole barn.
You're not gonna make me pull up that concept plan I did six or eight years ago.
Putting a pole barn out by the road, to me, would be a mistake.
We, we actually, we actually did some concept planning a number of years ago, Don and I did, just to look at how a town office and a library might fit on this. And it was, it's achievable.
But, but that building would have to go, though.
Oh, yeah, the buil, yeah, the building would have to go.
But I'm, I'm not saying we do that, but I think, I think to put a, to put a pole barn. More substandard development.
We're stepping on people's toes.
So we're not, you know, we're not building two pole, these are just option one and option two. The, the next slide I have, and I, I wanna preface it, this is, I, I had to put some budgets to these. And the challenge was, is I'm putting budgets to things that I don't have engineered drawings for. But we've done ball fields, we've done small public services buildings. So we tried to put together our best estimate at what costs could be, including what the towns, what the town would have to contribute to it and what the IRT contribution would be in equivalent work. And most of it's around earthwork. For instance, the Egypt Road or Patricia Avenue, if you took nineteen acres times three or four feet of earth moving, multiplied simply times what a contractor would charge to move dirt around, it's an amazing number. It, it adds up very, very quickly. So we leverage, you know, all these assets that the guard can bring in for manpower and equipment with the town providing the materials, the permitting and the engineering as part of it. Your biggest project is the Patricia Avenue recreational fields. I just went through a master planning, something similar to that with the town of Gorham for their Little Falls fields. And, you know, they were, they were, well, depending on what you do, they were between two and three million dollars to, to do that. I mean, it's, it, it all depends on, it's like a shop. It all depends on what you, you ultimately want to do. Do you want, you know, lights and backs, you gotta have backstops? And, and do you put in some portable bleachers? What sort of parking is gonna be paved or gravel parking? I mean, all of these different features add, can add cost to the project. I tried to budget this sort of middle of the road. So you're not gonna get a concession stand, you're not gonna get a, you know, a, you know, somebody would have to fundraise. But we're gonna have to upgrade Farwell Road coming in. We'd have to build a parking area. We would have all the grading to build the fields. We'd have to put the drainage in for the fields. We'd have backstops and fencing for, for a baseball field. And then we would have goalposts and other equipment associated with ball fields. Plus, not to mention nineteen acres of loam and good drainage sand to, to drain this property properly. It, it adds up actually pretty quick. But that's a longer-term one. What, what I put down below was what I called year-one costs. So if we, you're, the town would be top-heavy in engineering and planning work because I, you gotta do the surveys, you gotta do the topo, you gotta do the wetlands, you gotta, it, all of these things would be a value for the whole project, but they'd also have to be done upfront so that you could plan out the fields and then maybe structure it to build one field now and build, then go through the permitting and everything else down the road. So you have a lot of upfront investment in that project, but I wanted to give you an idea of what.
Maybe it'd be good to talk about the overall duration of the project. Is that something Danielle would?
I got a next slide for that.
Okay.
Don't we need to know of the guard interest in doing this before we move ahead?
I'll talk about that, too.
We had a little bit of that, but at the beginning.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
You know, I'll, I'll get more in-depth of that because I've been talking to Sergeant Romano, so.
Oh, wait, can I ask something? Okay, this is, don't anybody laugh at me at this. I knew there was a dump at the top of Patricia Avenue. I did not know there was one off of Egypt. So this is just like a big circle, right, that they meet on both sides?
No, no.
No, so there's two different ones?
Two different ones.
There's two different ones. One was your MSW. So the, the one off Egypt Road was your municipal solid waste, that's household rubbish materials like that. The one off of Patricia was construction and demolition debris.
And it was also the so-called sludge site, right?
Yes, right next door to it.
So if they're not meeting in the middle, what, I guess I'm lost on which one you're doing it on.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's one or the other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not both.
It's, it's one or the other because of finances, but I think as far as the guard's concerned, you know, it's, it's one, two, three. I mean, whatever you want to do, I mean, they'll mobilize presumably whatever it is we want to do. But we don't think that, you know, more than one is, you know, something the town wants to consider. But you have three potential sites.
Yep, didn't, didn't realize that, so, okay, that's good.
The, you know, as far, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know if you guys can answer this, but.
We'll try.
If we did a nineteen-acre project on Egypt Road, would you have to do Mill Street? Or could you put all of the fields you have at Mill Street on Egypt Road? So, I mean, I'm just thinking about if, if you keep using Mill Street, so you don't disrupt that, you put all your energy into a new central location for soccer and baseball, but I don't know how many acres you would need.
Nineteen, from my experience, is adequate, barely adequate, believe it or not. That's with the circulation space and, I mean, what do we do? We did, we did two ball fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, circulation area and parking. And it was pretty much, I think it was about nineteen acres.
And one of the primary concerns that Kevin McDonald brought up was, the fact of the matter is, is right now Raymond Rec uses a lot of fields that are not town-owned. So what happens is, like, right now, the military is going to be using Camp Hines, so they won't have access to those fields at all. And who knows if someday Agawam could go away? So the fact of the matter is, in order to keep the rec programs operational, you have to have the space in the fields for them as well as the off-street parking because they said that even using the school fields, you have to coordinate with the school, not interrupt their sport activities. So these are spaces that you're giving the town's rec committee the ability to properly run its programs on.
What's interesting about that project is, you know, by far, it's the most expensive project, but it's also the biggest contribution from the military, just.
Right, I, I guess, so maybe, maybe I'm now, with this information, I think of it backwards. You do Egypt Road first, so you don't disrupt Mill Street, which you're gonna lose at least a season.
Oh, yeah.
If you got Egypt Road going, had those fields, then you would have less disruption to the rec program because if you could get those planted and usable, then you could, you wouldn't lose everything.
How many kids are in the rec program now with our declining population of kids?
I know the T-ball teams are down just because they used to have, oh, gosh, they used to have probably eight of them. And now I think maybe they only have like three or four, and they are down. And I think that's what you were talking about was my question is, Mill Street, to cut Mill Street off, you're cutting off, wow, like, that's our thing because between Mill Street, the schools, and then Camp Hines, Camp Hines was always the softball field for the girls. And they're down even teams, too. It used to be four and five, and it's like maybe one or two now.
And one of the things that could always happen is that Raymond could help some of those towns in the other areas that have like an overflow of students and then start to take in some of those kids as well and have adequate facilities in order to keep, to get the numbers back up, but then have, because, you know, I mean, that's probably why we wouldn't go out and advertise these towns is because, you know, as it is right now, you're competing for space. But if you had adequate facilities, you could go to another town and say, if you have any people that you're turning away, send them our way and we will have full-fledged teams now.
For the time being, and we're also looking, moving forward. I mean, we're looking forward.
Right. Now, and I agree with that, but I think, too, as I had to agree with Mike, I think I'd set up those, those first, have that set up. But then that also secures us, can we, and this is just, I think, me thinking, you know, with that soccer field, can we put somehow the baseball part on it, too? Do you know what I mean? I'm thinking multiple use is what it is for.
That would be the intent of that field, would be multiple use. The, this, this project right here, if you pursue the whole project, this would be a project that I don't see would be able to go into any sort of construction until 2015 because.
Because of everything that has to be.
Well, yeah, for right now, just to give you an idea, I, I think there would wanna be a, a planning process with involving the rec, probably reporting back to you folks, you know, to, to sort of get, assess the needs, you know, do we need, do we need sixty-foot di, do we need three sixty-foot diamonds and two base, two, two multi-use fields? Do we need more multi-use fields, less baseballs? Should we look at a basketball court up here? What about the access? I'm sure there'll be some public. So I, I would see that process taking, you know, a few months to get through. And then I have to do all my environmentals. And unfortunately, I can't do the environmentals until April and May when the snow's gone and we can assess the site for vernal pools and wetlands. And then, then you've gotta develop the design plan, submit for the, the DEP applications. Hopefully, we avoid any wetland impacts, that's the goal, you know, to do that. There'll be, it has to be a planning board approval and a traffic movement permit through the DOT. So all of that, I think, would probably take a, probably nine months to get through to have it with plans, construction drawings that I can turn over to the, to the guard and say, you're ready to go.
I, I guess what I'm looking, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think what I'm also looking at is, you can't, to me, because it, it's gonna be done for the town, is it can't be looked at. be done for the town, is it can't be looked at just as baseball, rec, or rec either. It's got to be, okay, what can families do? Is there parks up there? Is there picnic areas? Is there, do you know what I mean? It's got to be something.
A site for Founder's Day.
It's got, just overall for everybody, so everybody gets a feel for that instead of just, you know, rec or baseball.
And also, I believe it should be done hand in hand with the economic development plan. So we know what we can expect, yeah.
There is a, a school of thought on the issue of, you know, the current census versus the future. You know, no one can predict the future with perfect clarity. But I will say that we get inquiries, the town office frequently from people, they want to know what's available in the town, that sort of thing. You know, the idea that if you're going to, and I know the Raymond Revitalization Committee wants to, to, you know, rebrand the town, come up with some specific identity. But I can tell you that people relocating here, if they, if they were to, to choose a community, oftentimes they look at the, what the community offers. And, and we're light in the area of recreational offerings compared to other towns, I guess.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, I, I would, it almost sounds like there's a, it sounds like this is a lot of interest on this project. But if the guard had projects that they could mobilize this coming year, the Valley Road Tower Site, Fire Pond, the Public Safety and the Pole Barn, all those projects could certainly, if the town was so inclined to, to commit the dollars to, could certainly be ready for that construction season.
Right, well.
Would it be possible, because ultimately, at the end of the night, what we're trying to get, because of the timeline we're on, we're trying to get a consensus on and an agreement to go forward with some development work to get the, the less intense, you know, projects, the ones that I think we can agree on underway and, and perhaps under construction in this coming season. Now, I think about the bigger project, would it make sense to, to do some level of additional work and then have, you know, like a community sentiment vote on that possibly to see if there's interest in it before you committed to a full-blown? And is there time to do that? You know, see if there was interest in such a facility before you, before you went out and spent a ton of money engineering it. But you'd have to come up with some kind of a plan and approval process so that if there were interest, you could get it done in time to actually do it before the guard leaves town.
We could, we could, I think we could come up with, I'll call it a master plan without having to do boundary and topographical surveys. Because honestly, those are fairly, for surveying eighty-six acres, it's a fairly involved process. But in order to come up with that master plan, we would certainly need, in April, there's a very narrow window every April for.
The problem is going to be, you have to have enough information, because I've been through this many times. Enough information so that you can explain in, in a clear way what it is you want to do, the vision. And you can't do that without expending some level of money. But you don't want to go all in on something that you don't know whether the town has interest in, assuming that the selectmen had interest. I don't know that yet, but if they did, what, is there some way to get to the concept and have a straw type vote if, if you wanted to do it without, without expending all the money it would take to do a full engineering study to get this thing ready for construction?
Need pretty pictures.
The selection drawing, we used to call it.
So, yes, there is. I would still need to, I would still want to walk the site to look at it for things like wetlands and vernal pools.
There's a lot of wetlands back there.
Yeah, I need to know where those.
Just from my days when I used to hunt back there, there's a lot of water beyond that.
So what I tried to do in, in your packet, I think it's still in there, I, on, there's a whole, there's a whole letter I wrote in January that's dedicated solely to the Egypt Road. And what I, anticipating this might be the direction you go in, I, I, I developed what I call a phased, a master planning and due diligence phase, the work. And that was to work with the town, develop a master plan, the vision plans, assess the permitting, at least look at the chain of title and the deed to make sure that everything's all, that we're not having any particular issues around it. Map, we're using GPS, the wetlands, the vernal pools to integrate into the master plan. And once we get the master plan, to come up with a revised opinion of costs after walking the site, learning cuts and fills, talk to the DEP about the landfill, the permitting and all of that. And I carried a budget of twenty-four thousand dollars for that work. And I delayed all of the topographical, the boundary surveys, the actual permitting, the design, the grading drainage utility plans, but I deferred all of that into future phases so that you can go through the master plan process.
What goes into the hundred and seventeen thousand on the Valley Road Tower?
Yep.
We have all, we have the antenna, right?
So, yeah, let me walk you through that. I, I, so one thing we need to do is, the, well, the, out of that hundred and seventeen, the boundary and topographical survey was already done. That was fifty-four hundred dollars. I got a budget from a structural, we don't do structural in-house, but I got a budget from a structural engineer of thirty-eight hundred dollars to design the foundation and review the tower because we had to have a structural certification of the tower. SW Coal, a local geotechnical firm, gave me a budget of forty-eight hundred dollars to do the geotechnical work. To do a site plan and file the FAA, basically draw the grading drainage utility plans was forty-two hundred dollars. I carried fifteen thousand dollars for about six hundred cubic yards of roadway gravel. That's, that's just the materials. About seventy-five hundred dollars for loam and seed, three thousand dollars for two-hundred-and-fifty feet of fencing around the tower. There's an allowance of twenty thousand dollars for a generator in there, which would include electrical connections to the tower. And I had to guess at the foundation because I have no idea, so I had to make some assumptions. So I've got fifteen thousand dollars in there for the foundation. I carried fifty-five hundred dollars for electrical work, bringing electrical into the site. The guard would do the, the digging. And then there'll be cable, electrical supplies for the tower chases that go across and the control building that goes on it. And we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for, for that. And that's what added up to the one and seventeen.
How big of a generator would you need?
I mean, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, at least we figured based on the draw.
We debated that piece too, and so.
I mean, this generator could be.
It could be a tad high. We talked about that.
Yeah.
You know, it could be a fifteen, fifteen thousand, ten thousand dollar generator.
Yeah, it could be ten, it could be like one of those Generex, like a ten thousand dollar generator instead of twenty. These were just, some of these were placeholders because we just don't have the load.
We tried not to give you unrealistically low numbers.
Right.
The, I think we can refine these numbers down, hopefully.
But that's, that was where those numbers came from.
Do you want me to talk about what projects they're interested in? Like that we've already had feedback on or? So the extreme low hanging fruit, the number one thing is the main guards have already contacted me. And normally, when you submit the plans in January, it's for 2015. As it says, they're ready to come in 2014. And the first project they wanted to do was the Public Safety Vegetation Management Plan, which means that they may be able to do some work on the Egypt Road thing because they want to do, to bring in their harvesters. And there are going to be some people from the National Guards will be bringing in like these huge logging operations from Alaska and just coming in and taking it down.
Where kind of?
Yeah, it's like really cool, big equipment, so, and, you know.
Danielle's going to have to watch it.
They want to cut wood.
Yeah, exactly. They just want to take it down and get it out of there.
Don't we have a, a management plan?
We do, and I've already contacted the state and looked to see what sort of penalties. They'll probably minimal at this point. And as you, as you heard when Greg went through the, Patricia Avenue had the most manageable wood, but the Egypt Road, he said was, there's nothing there. He said we couldn't even sell it. So, but it could be used for an erosion control mix if we chopped it up and took it to another project. So we could recycle and.
Can you use it for the pole barn?
No.
No.
But on the pole barn, I mean, on the pole barn, we probably would go to our friends. And we've been good neighbors and friends with our utility folks. We would seek out any kind of resources like that that were usable, assuming we do a pole, pole barn. I mean, that's a, you know, that may not be the case. I don't know what exactly they build. We want to build what they build.
I call it a pole barn, but it could be a, a wood-framed.
Right.
Shed roofs with a, with a foundation. Or I could do sort of a, I could do it on piers.
What we want to do is what they built.
Yeah.
We want to build what they built.
And then the other project is the, we put a high priority on the Valley Road Tower project. And the reason is, is we bought the land, we put all the money into the boundary, it just made sense to get that ready to get, because they have people who do engineering and, and projects like that. And then, do you, you want me to kind of talk about costs of, now that we've talked about kind of what projects are interested in? So Nancy, as you saw today, prepared a memo for you regarding some of like where we were in terms of monies and some projections as to what this might cost us if we use some financing mechanisms. And what we would require right now in order to get some of these projects moving forward is some money at a contingency. And right now, there's about forty thousand dollars left in contingency. And Owens and I were talking, in order to get the Valley Road project ready to move forward, like the site plan review, engineering work, and then some of the environmental work on some of these projects, he'd require around like thirteen thousand dollars at a contingency. And then, as you also heard, that could be bumped up slightly in order to start covering the cost of the, the visionary work to, for the Egypt Road project.
And that would be getting stuff ready to go, ready to fire for town meeting this year.
Correct. And then the next number, the Undesignated Fund Balance Policy has you folks having a certain set of money. I'm trying to read through here. Either way, you're about half a million dollars over that. And what my recommendation would be is that you use about a quarter of a million dollars to get the year one work done in order to get your engineering done, start getting your materials ready, your permitting in place, and get everything ready for the guards to start coming in. Because the, the National Guards will be ready to deploy starting May 2015, 16, and you'll already be using some of your money to cover that. And you have to remember, a portion of that undesigned money is from your tower sale, like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that you guys set aside and put in there. Then that, when you add all this up, you'll see that it's about one point two million dollars. So I've already taken out about two hundred and fifty plus another like twenty thousand dollars. So that leaves, round that up, we'll say, in case we go up, up or lower, about a nice even million dollars. If you put that out to bond, we wouldn't have to start paying on that until the 15, 16 year. And then based on our current numbers and the way that things look, you're only looking at a, about a twelve cent change on your mill rate. But you could also realize some other bonds expiring as well. So you'd just be kind of sliding into one of those slots. So the overall message here is that we have an extreme opportunity with the projects as they're lining up with Camp Hines, with them, you know, with their vertical work and housing the guards so that they can easily deploy to our projects. Like this opportunity, I don't know that it would likely happen again, to have it set up as nicely as it is, to have the, have them here and ready to go on our projects. As Owens said, it's kind of difficult to start a project and know that they're always going to be able to come back. But if they're working on this many projects all at once, our chances are greater and everything's just there, you know?
One thing that's happened is Eric Tarbox, who's the scout director. Eric Tarbox, who's the scout director. What's that?
Scout executive.
Yes. He, he came out of the military a couple of years ago, and he had a number of contacts through that when he came out. He came out as an officer. And he, when he got in with the scouts, he started bringing all these, these military folks up here who are in charge of the guard units and the construction. And he did a lot of our groundwork and legwork to get them peaked and interested. And then Don found out about it and, you know, tried to leverage some of that.
Yeah, in the beginning, but this is, I would echo what Danielle's saying. I mean, I, I can't speak to whether you want to do the projects or not. That's a, you know, more of a, a local, you know, decision based on how you feel about the value of those projects. But in terms of, will this come around again? The answer is absolutely no. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. I, I don't think that this is going to come around for the state of Maine again because the last one was in what, Tennessee, where there was a three-year period?
Yeah.
And then it's going to go somewhere else, assuming the program continues, which it may or may not. They, they told us that very adamantly at the planning meeting that the folks from the Pentagon are at. I mean, this is something that has to be funded through the federal government. But if Maine realizes three or four years of work through this, which is what it's looking like, and we're able to partner with the scouts who are the lead agency in this case, that'll be it. You won't see, you won't see a national effort. You will see the main guard around, the main guards around, but not this again.
So what is the next?
And I guess, one of the things you've done here in your project costs is you've made your best estimate of, you know, equipment rentals moving. But they're also being housed and fed while they're here, which is something if they were only doing it for us, we would also have to pay for, right? So.
And give them the space, like, exactly.
And give them the space, so.
I, yeah.
When, when they were thinking about coming ten years ago, the plan was to work, and the school was available, that was back when, when the school was a local school. But the idea was that we would, you know, house them on one of the school campuses, feed them through the school system. So you're right about that. We, we would have to do that if we use the main guard ourselves.
So that's an additional benefit that's probably not realized in that chart.
No, it's not.
But anyhow, the, the question really is, do we want to spend some development money, a little bit of development money to get this a little closer? And actually, on some of the projects, turn the afterburners on and make sure that we can get them done in the 14 cycle.
So Sam, I'm looking at, at least the Valley Road Tower project. We were going to try to figure out how to do that as part of our budget anyway. We've been working towards that. We were going to bring some sort of proposal to town meeting for that anyway. So I think that one's an easy one. The Public Safety Vegetation Management Project, I, I talked to Chief about that. One of my visits there, when I, I realized what it used to look like and, and what it could look like for the folks who drive by on 302. So I was going to be speaking on that as part of the budget process as well to figure out how we could do that. Fire Pond seems like a public safety issue. Right there. So the, the, the first three seem pretty straightforward and would, we need to do them anyway.
That's right. We've talked about them all.
Right, I, I just think that is that. Then I'm going to jump down to the bottom, the Public Works Pole Barn. I think if Chief would just pull some of the fire department stuff out of the garages, then Nate could put his stuff in and we wouldn't need a pole barn.
See?
Right? So it would be a cooperative thing.
I thought I was going to land in a tent tonight.
Right? So it could be cooperative. They could go six months in, six months in, maybe we could do a.
Three months each winter.
So I, I'm, I'm not so sure about the pole barn.
We've already, I think the chief can speak to this, but I mean, and it's, I mean, it is what it is, but we've already got equipment, even at Public Safety, that's outdoors now, I notice.
Yeah, we're, we're installing a couple of trailers outside and, and we're running into issues storing our boats. They're inside and it really makes it pretty crowded in our station to operate with boats and trailers, et cetera, and equipment in there. So a pole barn would be advantageous for, I think, for everybody. Definitely the Public Works assets that are outside are, they should be undercover. We, we know that.
Yeah, I mean, we spend a lot of money on this equipment and they have just sat outside. It just makes no sense.
And I think the. And I think they brought up a good point about Mill Street versus down here from what it looks like for one, crowd that lot and also not putting up a new building if, you know, a pipe, a plains road, I'm sorry, I mean plains road.
We've got a Mill Street.
Mill Street, yeah, we'll put it down in the ball fields. So I guess, you know, from that standpoint, again, it's opportunity, right? I mean, fifty cents on the dollar.
I mean, I'm in, I'm in agreement, one, two, three and six there. Absolutely makes sense that you have to do. Now, I guess the Mill Street ball fields would not be a priority for me. It's just too much work and a lot of money.
It's just too much work and a lot of money, it just.
I see Egypt Road being more first, because that can really build up the town, can build up like the community development, it can do all of that. It will also get everybody off of Mill Street when there's baseball games going on, that they're parking on the sides of the roads and ditches and everything else. But that would be cool to have that whole big center up there.
I guess I would just want more interest in the part of the guard that they really want to do.
Oh, I, I think.
Egypt Road.
I think they do.
I know they do, we were there.
Yeah, we, we met with, Sam was at the pre-meeting with, with Colonel Michelle from Colorado, and he was very excited. But of course, it's going to come down to, really, it's going to come down to engineering-wise, environmental-wise, can it happen? We don't know.
Right.
But that they want to do the project, yes.
Yes.
And I think that one.
That's a fifteen project.
That one from, from the voter's standpoint, that's, that's the big nugget, right? That's the costly one, that's the, the vision one, right? The, you need the, the pretty picture, we need to have a, a workshop and get, and that's the one you don't need to decide on, you know, for, for some time into the future.
We just need to start the work though. No, that's the.
Well, if, I mean, I'll, if I would only, if you were going to do anything with that one, I would just spend the upfront planning time, the due diligence work to see if it's feasible, what sort of concerns, and then you, then you would know from there and then you could, because I still would need, if, if we did the upfront work and it showed it was a great project and a project you wanted to go forward with, I'd still need another six to nine months to get the permits, which means this is a twenty fifteen, so.
Yeah. Right, but, but for now, on.
Right.
On that project, if we had something pretty for an April or May meeting prior to town meeting, that we could have a public meeting, but it would mean you would do pre-work with rec department, with the town, to come up with a concept. And it might be that that egg shape that you've got, that nineteen acres, can't go where you think it goes.
Right.
Right.
But that you show, okay, we could do X number of ball fields, X number of parking, X, you know, this would be a configuration to be determined.
Sure.
But you could still give a map and a, this would work, you know, kind of thing, that, that the rec department could get behind. And, you know, you're talking about a lot, you're talking about, I think, walking trails, as, as Teresa mentioned, or, or a, a public space that, that is attractive. And I think, Don, you make a good point. You take someone down to Mill Street and you see our two ball fields, and if that's what we say we have for rec, that and what's at the school, they, you know, in terms of families, it's not the best selling point, as we look towards our future for families, so.
Let me throw this one at you.
Okay.
How about this? Let's assume that we, it sounds like we're building some level of consensus on some of these smaller projects. We begin the engineering work, we head to town meeting. You know, you throw out a number on the larger project, and it's now, in my mind, it's drifting towards Egypt Road. You know, you've done pretty well with the contingent basis idea. So we, we come up with a, a plan where, uh, you know, we get to, to what we need to be able to, to present this properly. But, uh, are you feeling lucky? Can we, let's talk about, let's talk about the budget is what I'm saying. Are you willing to talk with us on that? And, and, uh, because I think the commitment may be there, but, you know, we've got, uh, an issue of the, the funding right now, in the here and now.
Well, the simplest, least cost scenario for that, to get a, to get to a pretty picture would be, taking the town's GIS information, whatever you have for wetland information now, and basically just overlaying schematically where, you know, how a field layout might be with baseball fields, maybe meeting a couple of times with the rec, and then just developing a color graphic for that. And that would be, you know, significantly less than, than going to that next level, which is going out and looking at vernal pools and wetlands and doing all that due diligence.
Right, and, and the way I see it, I mean, I don't know if the selectmen would agree with me, but the way I see it, if we could get to that concept level and be able to present something in conceptual form, then you could have some sort of a straw vote, a non-binding vote, or something like that to see if there was interest. And if there was interest, you know, you could have a follow-on article or however you do it to get the funding you need to do this properly. Because it's a huge amount of money for the town to, to spend, not knowing whether the town wants to do it.
From, from an economic development standpoint, what about demographic study? You know, what about knowing how many kids you have coming through? And whether this is an investment that's not going to pay off for another generation? I mean, does that make sense?
That's a good point, and then, of course, another thing that occurs to me, and this is coming up this cycle too, I think, Mike's going to speak to it, and that's the survey. You could put information into the survey or questions into the survey about this. But that only tells you about the people here now, though, I guess.
You got, you got different sports things up there, though, so more people is into soccer, you know? Hopefully we bring people into Raymond, bring it up, build it up, you know?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just want to know.
No, no, I understand.
You know, that you're not spending.
For just a handful.
Two million dollars for twenty kids that are going to be here in that fifteen years.
That's, that's why, I, I think it's important to get a, some sort of a pre-vote in my, in my mind, to see if people have the interest.
We have time to do that. Town meeting, what, when is, what's?
June fourth.
June fourth. So, um.
You would have a public meeting prior to that.
Yeah.
The, the, the town meeting would be to vote for money, to actually do the stuff, but.
What I would envision would be some sort of a public presentation where you would talk about this project alone, the big one alone. The others would be built into the town budget, you know, concept, uh, drawing, a discussion. And then, I would say, a secret ballot vote, straw, non-binding vote to see if people are interested in it. And if there is interest, then you would, then you would go to the next step. That's how I see it, but I, I mean, I don't know if anyone agrees with that idea. The other idea is you, you put the money in upfront and lay it out if you believe strongly enough in it, and, and lay it to a vote.
I like the straw vote idea, or the survey.
Or the other idea is you say it's too much of a project for the town to bite off, and it's, you know, I mean, this, I mean, we're just presenting the opportunity here, and it's, it's, it is a tremendous opportunity, but it's only a good deal. I talked to Mike about this earlier, if it's in your vision, if it's what you want to do.
So Owen, if, if you gave us a pretty picture so we could have some public meetings in May, in preparation for town meeting in June, where we would actually ask for money. We would have to put a warrant article in town meeting, which would probably be put in prior to any public meeting, because if you're going to hold a public meeting, awareness meeting in May, you're already going to have sent your warrants and proved your warrants. So it may or may not be voted on, it may be just be turned down because of the public hearing part of it or the, the public awareness part of it, and over the May time, it says, we're not ready for this. But if you found out in June that you had the money to engineer this, that's month six of this year. You're talking about a nine-month process. Does that work to get the permits you need done before the snow flies again? So that the guard can have it in time to do what they need to do? Or are you telling us that the nine-month process wouldn't start till June?
The, the, uh, the timeline you laid out would work fine, to get it designed and permitted for construction in the twenty fifteen season.
Right.
The, uh, only piece that, um, that I, I would like to do in April is to have my wetland scientist walk the site and look for vernal pools, because that's when it can identify. And I am, I, I, and the reason I bring that up is, is I, I, I have to take Advil every time I deal with these vernal pools. And because they're everywhere, and the Army Corps has one set of regulations, the DEP has one set of regulations, and, you know, my head hurts dealing with these things. But in April's when you can defend it, when, it's, it's when they're breeding. It's, it's when the salamanders and the, and the wood frogs and the fairy shrimp all, all lay their eggs. It's their breeding season, and it's usually the first two weeks in April. And that's when you can definitively identify whether or not you have vernal pools. And, and that, that gives me more headaches than any other single environmental issue I deal with on projects.
And you'll get to see the nice rusty water that's down there.
Yeah. So, uh, the, out of all, and, and that's, I don't know, it might be eighty-six acres, might take him one to two days to, to walk that. It might be, I don't know, twenty-five hundred bucks for him to go around and GPS it. But if, if I wait till eight July or August, what I have to do is, he's got to make, he's got to look at the physical attributes of the land. Vernal pools are these kettle pools that are shallow. They have roots and, 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 and sticks and stuff for the critters to put their egg masses to. And then they breed and they hatch and they go up into the wooded, uh, wooded areas to live and, and, and. I, I, yeah, don't give me that look, Joe, I, I know. I, I know exactly how you feel. But I, I'm the poor sap that has to represent you folks with these regulators on this, and, and it gives like.
And all the little fairies look happy.
Yeah, right. And I'm the first one to tell you, it makes me insane, it really honestly does.
You're stressing even thinking about it.
I get stressed, yes, I do.
So you've got to plan that into a number.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it, to do the master plan's not a lot of time. To make a graphic, to have my graphic person, to go to a few meetings, to, to, to map that out, come back, and, and then re-cost out what we ultimately end up with, you know, if we also, you know, do we, do we, did we decide we want a budget, lights in it, not, you know, what sort of road improvements to, to come back with a little more? It may go down, may go up a little, but it, that would probably be the right thing to do. I could tell you, I, I would, I'd be hesitant to use that Farwell Avenue or Farwell Road as the entrance, because you have two houses there, you know? Now, I know you buy the house knowing, or build the house knowing that the town owns that land. But geez, to have all those cars going right there, you drive with every.
Oh, that would be like insane every night, and there's baseball games going on and.
But look at your red lines, you're, you're very limited in choice.
There's your frontage.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, but I'm, but you can.
That's a lot, that's your frontage up there, unless there's another, unless there's another frontage I'm not aware of.
I don't see a way into that site.
Who, who owns the land the next frontage over? Is that something that we?
Over here?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. This looks suspiciously like some sort of a ravine or steep topography, a stream or something down through there.
A little brook through there.
Yeah, I have to stay away from those too.
Yeah, I just think maybe we could go over and maybe hop onto that land and get a road in there, but, yeah, but if you go up, you can't go in through Trisha Avenue.
No, they're not, they don't touch.
We, we have some.
That's a long way in.
Yeah.
We have some good news here. Um, Dominic, the streaming is working perfectly. You get a report that it's, uh, very clear, twenty-six hundred miles away in Phoenix, Arizona, tonight. So I want to let you know, it's folks out in TV land, the, uh, the video stream is appreciated by some of our snowbird friends in Phoenix.
So there's another lot right there, but we don't know who owns it. Uh, well, there's a lot here. To the right. Over here.
Right, does this look anything in there?
It almost looks like, is there a private way, Danielle, do you know?
There's another little, uh.
There's a logging road.
There's a logging road in there.
Yeah.
Oh, there is, because it almost looks like a.
Like too, I was.
And I think that.
Real teams.
Go down in there, I think it connect, you can get onto our property for that.
The hunters use it.
Down through here.
And the snowmobilers use it. So it's possible we could put a second entrance in if code enforcement, if it meets the rules, right?
Yeah, we'd have, we could look at that to see. I don't remember, uh, is that at the top of the hill there, do we have good site distance in each direction?
That's actually at the bottom.
At the bottom.
Down in the valley, it's in the valley.
Because you start gaining, as you go down, go towards gray, you start gaining all kinds of, it's kind of straight section of road.
Decent sightline.
That's good.
Yeah.
You've actually got less at our entrance coming out of there.
Right, you get, it's straight there. Up here.
So there, so there's a possibility, isn't it? And we're not going in between those houses.
There's a house right there. See, that's the road.
So.
There's a goat path right here.
What about the other four? The, the ones? I think we all, I don't know if we all agree. Mike and I agree.
I do.
I agree.
I do, I think those are, they're top priority things.
Those become part of the budget.
Yes.
And, you know, using that tower money is probably the way to go, and it covers the cost pretty much.
Yep.
Danielle, dip it into the funds.
All right, so, so I guess, um.
We just go forward with those.
So we need some money out of, we need some money out of contingency to get going. And we don't know what that number is. Danielle?
Owens, Danielle?
Well, if you're talking about the tower site, that's thirteen, but if you're talking, as Owen said, you need another twenty-five hundred for the vernal pool study. And if you want to start your conceptual stuff, I would say around a twenty.
Do you have a calculator?
Now, we're talking about the four sites that.
Yeah, so you're adding the one seventeen, the seventy, I, I'm sorry. So you're, you're taking these numbers as complete projects.
Right, but I think Mike's adding in, or somebody's adding in, the twenty-five hundred for the vernal pool study.
So you have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in projects there.
So we're going to look to put those in the budget.
How much do you need a contingency to get those going?
To check in April.
Prior to.
Well, that's what I was thinking was.
Oh, prior to the.
Prior, prior to town meeting.
Well, because we said Valley Road was thirteen, and then you add twenty-five hundred, so that's fifteen.
I'm going to give you the numbers.
Okay.
You have to do some magic for me.
Okay.
And you're going to add in the twenty-five hundred for the vernal pool?
Yep.
Do we have to do a vernal pool study in the San Sol building?
No, don't, don't make things more complicated.
Do you see that look he turned, like gave you, Nate? Like, where do you go there?
Add thirty-eight hundred dollars to that.
All right, so twenty-five hundred plus thirty-eight hundred, yep.
Plus forty-eight hundred.
Plus forty-eight hundred, yep.
Plus thirty-five hundred. Plus three thousand.
Okay.
Plus ninety-five hundred. Plus a thousand, that's the permitting for the. And why is there two numbers here? Why am I looking, oh, it's the same page.
Bill, did I?
Oh, we're not going to do Mill Street, so that's out, no, I'm not dumping. And twenty-five hundred dollars. And that's what you need for those, those projects here.
And your vernal pool study.
And your vernal pool study.
What does that come to?
Uh, thirty thousand, six hundred.
You know what, I didn't add anything in for the structural engineer to do some plans for that. Because we decided to add that in at the last minute.
Right. But that could be, that could be built into the cost for next year, right?
But you need all of that prior to June.
Yes, what do you need?
No, I don't need, no, I don't need, I, you're right.
We're asking for a number prior to June.
Yeah, prior to June.
No, that, that number's prior to June.
Really, that, with, because, uh.
Well, because, well, let me ask you this, oh, wait a second, we don't need a new permit, right?
Right.
Okay, let's go through these piece by piece. Do we need to do the structural analysis before June?
Now, we're, all right, I could put on a light, all right, so.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to go through these piece by piece, because I, I understand what you're saying. So, on the Valley Road Tower site, do we need to do, we don't, we could wait till after June, we could wait till after June to do everything on the Valley Road.
Except for Egypt Road, because that, so Egypt Road is the only thing that's dependent on getting stuff ready in April, and then getting us ready for the pre-meeting in May, right?
So, look, if, if your town meeting is in May, right?
June.
June.
But our pre-meeting is in May.
Okay, but the straw, I'm sorry, but you wouldn't authorize these dollars to be spent until June, is that right?
Until July one.
July one, okay. So then that means for the Valley Road Tower site, you, after July one, we would have to do the structural, I, I'm just walking through the time, that means most of these projects would be difficult to, with the exception of the fire pond, would be difficult to do in the summer of, of this, this coming summer. Because if it's July one, you have to design it.
Well, no, that's what we're asking you for. We're, we're asking you, what do you need to spend to get ready for these projects for money prior to?
July one.
A minimal, a minimal cost.
To get you going.
Everything going, and then as of July one, there'll be money to pay for all of it.
All right, and then.
Or actually, you'll know on June fourth whether or not you have money to pay for it, because the town meeting will tell you whether or not you can have it.
And then based on my discussions with the military, the project that they're, that they're aiming for only for twenty-fourteen, the only project I have interest for this year is the Public Safety Vegetation, all the other ones.
So that means, so, so that means the others can wait until the town meeting approval.
And that's what I'm saying.
So, so all, all you need for engineering are the vernal pools.
Yes.
Plus the, the engineering.
So we're going to wait a whole year on the Valley Road Tower?
No, that's what I'm saying, that was the thirteen thousand that I was bringing up, because I thought you needed this one, this one, and this one.
I, I got to walk back through this, because I'm getting confused myself now. So, the, the, if, if July one comes and we want to be ready to say, let's go to construction, let's go to construction, here's plans, National Guard, go build these, assuming they're ready. That means between now and July one, on the Valley Road Tower, I have to do the structural analysis, I have to do the geotechnical, I have to go get the permits, and I have to draw the site plans, that's, okay? I have to do the geotechnical, I have to go get the permits, and I have to draw the site plan. So that's, okay? Now, on the fire ponds, I don't have to do anything between now and July one. The public safety vegetation, I have to go to the DEP and modify the site plan approval. And I have to go back to the planning board, because it was approved by the town planning board. So all of that would have to be done before July one, right? So that it's ready to go on July one. The Egypt Road project, we would need to spend the money to map the vernal pools and to develop a master plan. That's it, right? For that piece. Okay, so let's go back here. So and I'm going to walk you through each one of them, and you can, we can see if we agree on that. On the Valley Road Tower, there's thirty-eight hundred dollars to do a structural analysis. There's forty-eight hundred dollars to do the geotech. And there's forty-two hundred dollars to do the site plan. That gets you ready for, that that makes you shovel ready for July one.
Right.
Okay, that's all you would spend for that piece. For the fire ponds, we said that we're not going to worry about the fire ponds. So that's out. The public surface safety vegetation, the the DEP, between the D, the DEP permitting is is ten-five, and that includes an application fee in there. Mill Street.
Ten-five.
Ten thousand five hundred.
Yep, because it has to redo. So the problem with that one is it's very permitting. I probably am going to, I'm worried I'm going to have to design that field, that area down there is a buffer. If I take out the buffer and I can't treat the stormwater in the buffer, we're going to have.
There's a retention pond there.
Yeah, well, what's that?
Isn't that a sediment pond?
Yeah, it's a retention pond.
But there's also a buffer down there for stormwater quality. So if I'm dipping into that, this one could be, there's mu, I'm not saying we would spend all that money, but there's money in there to design an alternative stormwater treatment system if I impact that. So.
So that one would be a not to exceed number.
Yes, that money, that is simply to make sure we cover the money in case I have to design one.
So we're going with a high number instead of a low?
Yeah, it could be a lot less than that. It could be half that easily, if I don't have to go through that effort.
Pool barn, no permitting.
No permitting. I wasn't going to do anything on the pole barn until after July one.
Right.
So we're at twenty grand, twenty-two grand.
Then the vernal pools for twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five.
So twenty-five thousand.
I'd like to at least pay my graphic person to, you know, a little bit to do the graphics for the.
Yep, what's that?
Carry twenty, carry two thousand for that.
Twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So we have what, thirty-six?
Forty, because not all the money gets spent. It's about, it's a little over forty thousand. It is forty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents, because not all the money was spent with due diligence.
How about some questions?
I say we do it.
I say we do it also.
That's not how you do it, Teresa. You 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 have to put the words a little different.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion we need here? Do I have to list it all out?
No.
Okay.
Just this.
The twenty-seven eight?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that we allow twenty-seven, eight hundred, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred.
From contingency.
From contingency to do what's needed for the Valley Road Tower, the fire pond, the public safety vegetation, and the public works pool barn, and the vernal pool.
There's no public, we're not going to do the public works. There's no money. We don't do anything.
But those are the projects. That's good.
Okay, and then.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? I saw the way he was moving his lips. I thought there was going to be.
Good.
You you took notes in all this, right, Danielle?
I'm a little concerned. I mean, here we are. It's it's February. We got four more months to go and.
Yeah, but, no, look at the projects that are being installed. These are good.
No, I know that. I'm I'm not saying that the project says it wrong, but you now, you're down to fourteen thousand dollars in your contingency. And you better hope we don't have an emergency come up.
And we're going to need some of that.
Yeah.
So.
There is, there is one other issue very quickly. Bruce?
Yes.
Bruce wanted to address you on a unrelated issue. This is also something that's just come up recently. It has to do with the.
Do we need, do we need Owen?
Pardon me?
Do you want to throw me out?
You're all set to go, Owens.
I don't want to throw, I don't want to throw you out.
Thanks very much.
I don't want to throw you out, but if we're, if we're moving on, I don't want you to have to stay either.
I hope this is a five-minute or less presentation.
It will be. This is a good news, bad news type scenario. The bad news is as you know, we had CIP money put aside to reconfigure our rescue unit, number one. When we retired it, we've ordered the other one, of course, to replace it. The the problem that we're finding with the vendors is that it's right at curb weight right now. In order to do what we want to do with it and meet our goals, it it's not going to meet. And we're going to spend a lot of money getting something that won't ever meet our needs. So in looking at it, we said, let's start looking used to see what's out there, something that will be more along the lines of what we do need and will be usable, user-friendly, and meet the goals of the department. So I started looking around, and there's a myriad of used equipment out there in the medium-duty rescue type category, which is, to clarify, say chassis with a storage box and a bunch of storage containers within that box, basically to store equipment. There's no pumps, no water contained on it. But we wanted to carry our technical rescue equipment on it, to be sure. So looking around, and we found a couple trucks out there. And the good news is that actuality, this is lower in price than what we have in our CIP. So there's an upside to this whole thing. But one of these trucks is in Connecticut, and I think we're going to try to take a ride down on Friday, take a peek at this. It's a ninety-nine walk-in rescue, and it comes out of St. Albans, West Virginia. The truck has forty thousand miles on it, and the price is very much negotiable. Axle weights and body weights, et cetera, cabinets, et cetera, all meet our needs. And we've had several people look at it online, look at some pictures, and talking with the prior owners of of the vehicle and the current owner, which is an apparatus vendor, find that their description of the vehicle is impeccable, not a speck of rust. That's coming from a sales guy. I'm waiting to hear from the chief tomorrow.
I'm having mechanical.
And mechanical.
We're going to take Nate with us.
Take Nathan with us to get down to look at the mechanicals. I can assess the body and the mechan, the metals, et cetera, and that. And Nathan with the mechanicals for sure.
So order of magnitude, to cut to the chase, you started with ninety, you're down to eighty, because you used it for other things. So you had eighty budget.
Right.
But I I'm telling you, they're asking fifty, but we're not anywhere near fifty in my mind.
I'm thinking forty, forty-two tops, and then outfitting money, which is.
But but I would suggest that if you wanted to go this route, because you sell the other one that you had planned on retrofitting that can't be outfitted to what you want to do.
Correct.
You're going to get a minimal number. And that's my strategy, if I were to negotiate this, is they allowed a minimal number on this one, even though it's substantially better and bigger truck, so on and so forth. But the goal would be to bring this thing in, you know, somewhere fractional on what you had planned on the overall budget. So you have a surplus on the project and a truck that meets your needs.
I'm thinking that the worst-case scenario on the up upside, again, worst case, you're looking at fifty to sixty thousand outfitted.
Versus the ninety that you planned and the eighty that you have.
Prices I'm getting for vendors to redo are in the eighty thousand dollar range. So we're right on the money, unfortunately, to build what we aren't going to be able to use. The axle weights on the thing, just not what we thought originally. It's got an eight thousand-plus pound axle on the rear end of the thing. It's just slightly heavier than you pick up trucks off.
So assuming they don't stream this in Connecticut, my strategy would be to go down there, small little town from Maine. We've got a bake sale. Here's what we have. Let's negotiate.
Absolutely. I like the bake sale theory. Sounds great.
So what we're seeking here, though, is your, I guess we have the budget.
We have the money.
It's a change in direction, though. So we're looking for your blessing on going in a change in direction to accomplish the goal for less money with a more suitable truck.
Correct.
Bless you, my son.
Seems like the Raymond way.
And dispose of the other truck.
And the disposal. When the new ambulance comes in.
By then, how are we doing when it's time?
So it will net less than that if you sell the other truck, or is that net with the standard?
That was net for this, but the other truck would be at some point later. It's going to be June or July in service date on the new truck, probably June. So that's when the other truck will be.
And what do you think we'll get on the other truck?
Oh, what we'll get on it, geez, you know, the last one we will get, I think, seventy-five hundred. I would hope we could get ten to fifteen out of it, though.
Okay, so if you get ten.
They really aren't worth a whole.
You buy it for thirty-five, it's a net twenty-five.
Correct, yes.
And I mean, why don't you send out when you get a chance, send out the pictures so they can see what it is we're buying? This is a, I mean, I'm not into fire trucks, as you know, but this is a clean truck and it's a heavy truck. Dennis always used to accuse me of public works bias, but it's a clean truck.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Good, thanks. Yes, nice going.
Do you have storage space for this?
Once Nathan thinks it's up.
Where we configure everything and get our votes outside, yes.
Yeah. But the bottom, the bottom line on the evening, though, I would tell you, folks, this is how we started. This is all good news meeting and tremendous opportunity. I'd like to thank, because Owens is gone now, I want to thank Owens. I want to thank Danielle for taking this this project on and doing a great job. It's a team effort. I mean, your first thing is discovering an opportunity. Once you discover an opportunity, that's fine. But the main thing is seizing the opportunity, getting it together, and making the the submittal, selling it. I think you're a big part of that, Danielle, and thank you. And you did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Adjourned.
Oh, you don't want to do the minutes?
Minutes have been tabled. Because we just, because we just adjourned. So the minutes were tabled.
Well, you don't have a second on any adjournment motion, so.
I don't think I needed one. I thought motion adjourned needed a second.
Well, also.
According to Robert's rules.
But according to Robert's rules, if you motion a table, it has to be in a.
I didn't motion a table. It's been tabled, because I motioned to adjourn if you accept my motion.
I got a second. Someone go home.
All in favor? We're adjourned.